You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 22nd, 2022 special meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
It is 1:35. We call this special meeting to a session and start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, call Miss Sutton?
Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Michael Vincent.
Present.
Stacy Benny.
Present.
Kenna Fly.
All right.
Talani Raina.
Present.
Uh, Jack Money Hand. And that's it.
We have a call.
Yes.
Um, we're gonna get straight to the business. Um, we have no minutes or communications to report, so we're just gonna go straight to, um, new business, and I'm gonna turn it over to the executive director to first speak about the snow removal.
Can we change it since we have the two security?
You gotta do the security first?
Yes.
Anybody in polls?
Sarah Sincero.
Yeah.
Okay, security first then.
Okay, um, in your packet, we have two security. Uh, I sent out to four and two responded, and so one is Stark Security and the other one is Elite 24 Security. So I'm gonna let, um, Brandon from Stark start first. Brandon?
Let me get ready.
Okay. Um, can you tell them, uh, something about your agency, please?
Okay, uh, we've been around for about ten years, uh, mainly providing armed security and police officers. Uh, last three years, we've got that work to, uh, security, so we're about six, seven, forty-eight armed. Um, we are licensed in Illinois, Michigan, Indiana, Iowa, responsive with offices in each of those states. Um, we have roughly ninety officers right now, and I'm sorry to mention this on spot here, but there's every one of you here. Uh, we, uh, as far as housing, uh, we have an apartment complex over in, uh, Susten, like Spurly Lodge. Uh, we provide services for markets, which is a new, um, DCFS facility, we're here twenty-three or DCF three in their locations, and, uh, senior sector in the city of Markham. Uh, sites out in the hotels, English Garden Market, so pretty much covers our housing experience.
Okay, Mr. Brandon, this is, um, Commissioner Rodney McCormick. I have a question for you. Do you have the, do you have the power to detain individuals that's, um, doing damage to our property?
We have the authority to, uh, for crimes that are done in our presence.
Yeah, and what I mean by det- uh, forgive me, go ahead. And what I mean by detain is just like hold them until, um, till law enforcement agencies are called, but the most, the crucial part of this is to make sure we can ID these individuals.
Okay, well, um, we've got different, uh, technology items that we do use, uh, Axon Jam, Spy Jam, if that is something you guys want in your housing, um, facilities, uh, but yes, you know, we do detain where, uh, we've done that several times, we have that, unfortunately, we have to wreck people and hold them for, uh, the police when, when the crime is committed, or if we kill or rob a concert like that.
I pass. Anyone else?
All right, this is Commissioner Michael Vincent. I just have a question about your coverage, eight AM to four. Is that your, is that the one you're quoting, or do you have coverage for other hours? I see there's a special holiday rate, but what about midnight shifts or off shifts?
The thing that more was most requested than, uh, RFP, um, we're, we're.
Eight-four? No, it was seven to seven. Okay, it was seven to seven.
Okay, I must have missed Reddit or something.
No, it's okay. It was seven in the evening to seven in the morning.
So it's an overnight?
Yeah.
We're looking at overnight shift, Brandon, do you understand that then?
Yeah, but, uh, next, uh, works overnight.
And that's still a thirty-two dollar an hour?
Correct.
Is it a marked vehicle? Do you bring vehicles or how?
Uh, if you need one or vehicle, there would be additional.
Well, I imagine your, your officer's gonna travel to the location somehow, right? Is he bringing a personal vehicle? Is there any identification on the vehicle for security? Uh, what's, what's the?
Uh, yeah, I must have missed that information in the RFP. I didn't see any request for.
No, I'm, I'm asking, yeah, I'm asking the question, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just asking a question. Typically, you have ninety officers, how do they typically cover a location?
Well, yeah, they drive a personal vehicle, all the way to, you know, however they get there, um, we, you know, we have, uh, clients that require company vehicles, and most of those are left on site.
Okay, but that's, that's all I have.
Ms. Benny, any questions?
Um, nothing that I can think of right now.
Ms. Raina, are you on there?
Yes, I'm here.
You have any questions?
Yeah, man, it's time.
Okay.
Okay.
You have, you say you have, we have two here?
Yes, the next one is, um, Elite Security. Turn anything in here from the packet. There's this.
I don't see it. Before, maybe before. I didn't see it on the email either.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have it.
It's in the package she got it labeled from, it's right before the security, um, it's right before the security. The tag, yeah, it's before the security tag. Vincent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, could you present, um, leads to the commissioners? Thank you.
Yes, yes, somebody on the RFP is putting forward the chief, I was around about four years ago, probably about, uh, the office in the different state, uh, we're different states, uh, this expanding throughout different states, uh, pretty much now, uh, like, uh, one for one, uh, much of the papers, uh, there are about one million others, I'm surprised now, and, uh, it's up where you know us, we have law enforcement and military officers off, uh, off route, uh, by their back, uh, security, uh, we have some security officers, uh, particular police officers that do, uh, do also vehicle patrol, uh, such as, uh, like a lot of vehicles, uh, sometimes personal vehicles, uh, help me over, uh, if, uh, like a lot flashing around, present a credit, okay? Offer a lot to, uh, convenience stores, hotels, other, uh, stores, uh, such as, uh, parent supply stores, things like that, what nature, things to stay. Any questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner McCormick. I have a question for you. I see, I see you have, you, you offer us GPS, uh, so we know that, um, where your, um, security guards are located in our facility? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That only, that only works when they own the property, whatever the location is standing, net range that covers the area, so they will have to be in that area, uh, on top of your actually work upon the site, uh, you have to be, you have to block in and out, and barcodes be placed throughout given areas, what they may want to check, and we will put barcodes in an area to make sure that also check, and who needs to look at, if you go back to any, any of the change device, see what time exactly that officer take their location and what time they scanned that area, unless you know that they're, uh, uh, and if there is, whatever areas decide to put a company show this, that, you know, each barcode, and it shows where they were scanning, and that the what time, or what.
Okay, we, we've been having a lot of problems with our vacant units being broken into and a lot of damage done to drywall and other, other things inside the unit. So if you don't mind me giving you a scenario here, um, if you, if you was to approach us, um, one of our units that's vacant with, um, ten or fifteen individuals in it, how would you, how would you deal with that situation?
Ten to fifteen individuals inside?
Yes, inside of one of our vacant units that no one should be in.
Okay, first thing, is this normal, sir?
We didn't hear what you said. Could you repeat it, Vincent?
Was it small or large?
It's armed or unarmed?
Oh, it's armed.
Okay, well, one thing I probably do, if they're on the inside, one on the outside, both on the inside, it's more than likely someone out of the west, you know, about ten, fifteen people with the gun, uh, that's just what I know from my police experience, uh, been a police officer, six years, you know, which is, police officer, uh, but, uh, definitely have a weapon, you know, probably, um, probably gonna walk into a place like England, who immediately called the police in that situation, uh, as it's going along, for about ten to fifteen people, uh, that man's, uh, with the, the chance to be able to catch somebody, overturning somebody, you know, and they were holding the vehicle to one of the other divisions, did, uh, be able to catch one, one person, be able to catch, you know, we get, uh, people, sometimes, uh, we get, we, uh.
And, uh, would your officers, uh, will they also, will they be, will they be equipped with body cam, body cams?
Uh, necessarily, don't have, uh, anybody with body cam, but there's some that are probably goes, uh, that's, right on, without, uh, if you mention something, no one would probably not have a body cam, but, uh, would be replaced with, uh, could be.
You said if we requested, you'd probably make a, you'd probably do something to make it happen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, our, our goal here is to make sure that we stop the property damage and make it safe for the tenants that's out there, and, and then when there is a problem, that we can, we can get these people, um, ID'd, and, um, knowing that sometimes, um, most individuals give the wrong name, I think body cam is very important, so then we can at least try to ID them and then, uh, and start the eviction process. I have no further questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vincent, I'll ask you the same question about your, your vehicles. Are you on a marked vehicle, or how do people know that you're out there as far as identifying yourself?
Oh, you're gonna see this right, they'll be seen on top of the vehicle, uh, there will be flashing, you know, different kind of, uh, and you'll drive, and they will definitely know, see a break, uh, right up inside of these, you know, living areas, uh, the ones that's probably the light, uh, on the outside, and your nose will measure out through there, and will be, uh, put the margin outside.
And what hours are, are you proposing? Are you proposing any hours, or is that up to us about your, on your, quote, it says approximately sixty hours a week? Is that our choice of hours, or can we go above the sixty, or is that, is that up to us?
Yes, it would be a purpose, uh, they mentioned, uh, it's a problem.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I don't, it's, it's, I mean, I think that I was, that's supposed to be.
Okay, but overnights is, is that not a problem for your company?
No, no, I don't, I'm also working on night hours.
Most of the problems are overnight.
Yes, yes, soon as it get dark outside.
All right, no, no further questions?
Nothing for you.
Ms. Raina, any questions?
No, um, nothing that comes to mind right now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vincent, and, um, is it, Mr. Brandon? Brandon, thank you for your presentation, and we will get back with you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms., uh, next on the, next on the agenda.
It's, uh, the post for snow removal.
Before we start this, we want everyone to know that we will be dealing with the snow not like the past. We will make sure that our tenants are safe and these sidewalks are done and our driveways are done, um, so, cause we have to, um, allow a certain amount of time to put the, the contract together, correct?
Correct.
Um, Ms. Hutton is also going to let everyone know that we already have somebody that we are going to, um, start today.
Yes.
So with that being said, Ms. Hutton, I turn this over to you again.
Okay, um, today, because of the urgency, I have, uh, a contract with, uh, Mr. Wagner. I do have his insurance paper, uh, to let everybody want to review. Um, he's gonna do the snow for today until we get the contracts going for the contractor that will be doing the rest of the season.
What's his full name, just?
Uh, James Wagner. Mr. Wagner did not, uh, apply for the snow removal, but he said until I got someone in place, he would assist us.
Is he an individual, or is he?
He has a company.
And what's his company?
Uh, his company's name is James Wagner Cleanup and Hauling LLC.
And his license and, uh?
I have your company.
Is there a reason why he didn't?
I'm not sure of the reason. He just told me he would assist until we.
Can you tell we got somebody? But he's not interested in staying here.
No.
All right. What's, what's the rate for the emergency procurement?
Um, the rate, he hadn't really gave me the particular rate, because if I'm not mistaken, they were doing by inches like the other, but he hadn't given me.
Yeah, we need to make sure that we know that, because then it was a surprise bill.
Right.
Knows what it would be.
I'll, I'll make sure I know the exact rate.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I think all of us as commissioners, not only is the snow the problem, but also ice. It's gonna freeze up out there, so we gotta make sure that they at least get out here and put salt and stuff down in front of them everywhere they possibly can, so.
Yeah, we're gonna put salt.
Okay.
In fact, we started putting salt out here already.
And we will pay, we'll, we will be paying for this out what fund? If we agree on this?
Um, operations. Now, the, uh, depending on the price of the bid, we could pay out of capital, uh, for the, the contractor for the year.
Yes, I, I.
But for the short one, we're paying out of operations.
So if there's no other questions on, on the emergency procurement, then are you gonna review these with the commissioners and these other proposals?
Yeah.
You gonna do that now?
Yes.
Yeah, just with the emergency, um, I hope that you look it over.
Sure.
Before we make, because we gotta get this done, so.
Yeah, so basically, we need to have something drawn up so that it's clear, uh, what the arrangement is between them, but obviously, it's an emergency procurement, the executive director has the authority to give that to great likelihood, she's already done, and it's snowing now, so I know there's activities going on, if you speak, but I'll make sure I work with her to have that all documented.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, um, if you look, the first company they gave us was All The Rage, and they quoted nine thousand a month for all three properties. Uh, the next company was Mr. Estrada, and that was E&amp;J Land Services.
Oh, it's, uh, JE.
JE, okay, and, um, they quoted seven thousand for all three properties, and then the attachments inside is Bulldog Lawn Care and Landscaping, and I know he is from around here, LaPorte, if I'm not mistaken, um, he did his and, um, inches. Uh, the amounts is broken down to inches, what we would pay. And then the last person is Brandon from Bee Handy Services, and he did visit Anne Amont, and then based on his visit, was based on twenty-five visits. For the monthly amount, I should say.
Yeah. Did you do any kind of background check on any of these individuals, or check any of your references?
No, um, the only one that gave me references was Bulldog, and, um, he says he does Canterbury, he does, um, just some of the surrounding, um, apartments in this area.
With the flat rate monthlies, did you get a indication of how, when are they coming out? It's good to say we're writing a check for nine thousand a month, but when are they coming out?
No, they didn't tell me, uh, any exact time they would be coming out. Uh, the initial quote was between two to three inches they would come out.
So if I could ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure I understand, um, uh, Bee's Handy Man Services, uh, proposals.
Mm-hmm.
I, I see they're doing an amount per visit, or in the alternative, a flat amount per month, so for the three properties, it's fifteen hundred a month for one, twenty-eight seventy-five for the second one, and then for like?
Uh-uh, no.
That's not how that reads?
Uh-uh, no. How it read is for Eighth Tenth, is fifteen hundred a month flat.
You're right.
For Boulevard Gardens, it's two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five a month flat.
Right.
And from Lakeland Estates, they're asking five thousand one hundred and twenty-five a month flat.
Right, so, yeah, that is what I'm saying. So adding all three of those together, their flat fee equals maybe five hundred a month?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just so you can think of your similar numbers, because some of the others had the whole thing, the flat fee, the whole thing, I just, I just, uh, for you.
Yeah, thank you.
When we talk about Lakeland Estates, what will they be, what will they be doing for Lakeland Estates? What, what will be done?
They're doing the streets, uh, the streets inside Lakeland, Saltwood, and the sidewalks inside Lakeland, and, uh, community center parking. They will not be doing the driveways of Lakeland.
They won't do no, no driveways, so they're basically just doing the street and the sidewalks?
Yeah.
And the walkway going up to the door?
No, the walkway in front of the door is the resident's responsibility.
Is that all it's been?
Yes, the walkways for the schoolchildren and all of that to go and catch the bus, because they have to stand on the corner. They are responsible, and they will be solving that as well.
Was that in their lease? That they're responsible for?
Yes.
And any snowfall accumulation from Bee's Handy Man?
No, it's the two to three. You talking about, did he change it for that? No, he didn't.
How long, how long did Mr. Wagner say he will, he will assist us?
Uh, I just asked him for, this is because of the snowstorm, until we would get, uh, we make a recommendation to a person.
Are you comfortable with making a recommendation today?
Well, that's why we're discussing it, to, you know.
Yeah, are you comfortable with making a recommendation of the three, or do you need to do some more research?
I'm comfortable with making a recommendation.
We're gonna open this up to discussion, uh, Mr. Vincent, you have any other questions?
No.
Ms. Benny?
No, I don't think.
Ms. Raina?
You know, since he done it?
Well, what do you think, um, as our attorney, Ms. Harris?
So, it's, it's interesting, I mean, the ones that provide you with a flat fee for the month, it's pretty clear, the service is similar, right? Um, and the numbers are what they are, so you're able to compare apples and apples. The Bulldog one is the one that is interesting to me, because we don't have a flat fee, and so I, I'm curious how much it could end up being. They seem like it's a, a good proposal, and it's something that they do, but I have no idea how much they're gonna charge you, and, um, so it scares me a little bit, you know, going into it not knowing what it could amount to, you know, I, I just don't know.
And it's a risk factor for both us and the company.
It's both, right.
If it's gonna snow twenty times this month or two.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right, so that, that one's a little more difficult only for that purpose, but, I mean, it sure seems like they got their stuff together though, right? I mean, so I get that impression at least. Of the others with the flat fee, if you're gonna go that route, I'd go with the low flat fee.
Right.
Yeah, with all due respect to the, uh, day-to-day operations, um, I, I think we need a little bit more time, um, and I would like Mr. Vincent to be on behalf of the board to sit down with you and our lawyer to make sure that we get the most bang for our buck, and that we're not getting into a situation where we, it'd be more harm than good.
So maybe what you wanna do then, that, that makes sense, but maybe what you wanna do is at least, uh, limit the number of potential candidates, like say for example, you think two of these make sense, if you, you know, named a, a committee, just like you say, Mr. Vincent and, um, the executive director, to look into kinda some of the referrals or references that a couple of them have, I think that's what you're saying?
Yes.
I think it'd be easier if you narrowed it down to, and I would do it on the basis of, hey, Bulldog is intriguing, you wanna kinda get a better idea of what those numbers might look like, and then somebody that gave you the lowest quote on the flat, that's what I would recommend. Do you agree?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that wanna sit on here with Mr. Vincent? And if, I hope that you entertain doing this for us.
Sure.
Ms. Raina, Ms. Benny, any one of you would like to sit on as well? Time is of the essence.
First to fly.
I can hear the question.
Would you, would you, um, like to sit on the committee to, um, to selection committee to pick the right, um, snow removal agency or authority?
To select what?
Snow removal.
Snow removal.
Oh, okay, yes, fine. I, I know, just not to leave Mr. Fly out, I know that he had a lot of input regarding the snow removal, I, I don't know what his reason for not being here is, but, I don't know, leave him out just in case, because I know he was very verbal about the snow removal, so.
Yes, and, and in my, my experience with, um, dealing with some of this, when individuals are not here, we can't hold on, we can't hold on, we gotta move forward, so we have two commissioners, I'm, I'm fine with the two commissioners. So we have two commissioners, I'm, I'm fine with the two commissioners, uh, um, I hope that we can sit down and get this done ASAP.
It, it may be a good idea just to call them in then, or Zoom them in, you know, next week, whatever your schedule, and kinda ask them whatever questions you have, to kinda drill it down a little bit more, and then come back with another recommendation for final approval, so you have them for the rest of the season. But it's hard to compare Bulldog with the others when you don't have that monthly amount what it might be, so I think you kinda have to go this route.
And I just wanna make sure, Ms. Raina, this will not, Ms. Mr. Vincent, Ms. Raina, that will not interfere with your day-to-day, will it? You can make time to get this done with them?
Yeah, I can make time to.
Okay, we can do by Zoom or whatever.
Yeah.
We need to get started.
I'll contact these, the two contractors.
So just for the record, who are the two?
Um, it would be Bulldog, and then it would be Mr. Estrada.
Okay.
And that, Mr. Estrada is the least per month?
Right. Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, and if you were, Ms. Raina and I, we can make phone calls, we probably all call the references to find out, and this would be a good weekend to find out, because it's an active storm, right?
Yes.
So if, if the references check out, this would be a good test, to say if they passed or failed for them.
Are we all in agreements with, um, meeting and getting this done? Do we have to entertain a motion on that, or?
I don't think you need it. I think, uh, this is a kind of a, a work session where we're talking through the issue. Um, you're not approving anything right now, I think just the path forward for the executive director is, uh, to explore this a little further with just two candidates now.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. I believe it's public comment.
Yes, public comments.
Anybody from the public gonna speak? Hearing none, let's move on to commissioner comments. And I just want to set the record straight. I was at the city council meeting Tuesday, and Madam President, um, Angie Nelson-Dietrich asked me a question, what, what was we doing for the tenants, uh, for the holidays? Um, I miss quote, I miss smoke, and we have done several things, and I will turn it over to Ms. Hutton to tell everyone what we have, what we have, um, done for the last day or two.
Uh, what we did for the residents of Lakeland, and some of the residents at the Boulevard, we gave, with the help of the Lions Club, we gave baskets and gift cards to those residents. Uh, we gave five here in Boulevard, and four in, um, Lakeland Estates. And, uh, the one young lady was not at home, but, uh, before I leave today, I'm gonna go back and try to make sure she gets hers.
And I would like to also thank Ms. Kathy Strasky, uh, she brought us some turkeys, uh, Ms. Blanch has this, they're all gone now? Yes, we had five, six, seven boxes of turkeys and, uh, sweet potatoes, and they are all gone as well, so thank you guys for a good job, um, appreciate it. Anybody else?
I have a comment with security, it made me think about, about security, and what are we doing as far as not just putting officers with boots on the ground, just to watch and see what's going on, but we're actively investigating cameras, putting cameras up or on, I know we're getting some, some quotes and some engineering work on that regard. I pass, I, I pass out at, uh, Mary Hill, I call it Mary Hill Estate.
Lakeland.
Lakeland State, sorry, and I pass it every day, multiple times. And as I look at that, one of the things, and I think, I think that's really a, what I hear a lot about the, from the other commissioners about trouble out there, broken windows, gunshots, starting fires, things going on. And then as I drive by and I look at it, there are three entrances and exits to that place. It's real easy to get in, get out quickly. At, at some point, should we, or could we look at putting up concrete barricades, closing off Dahleworth and the center entrance, and then barricading the south entrance in such a way that you have to slow down, you have to go slow and careful to enter and exit, while placing a camera right on that entrance and exit? That way we don't have speeding cars entering and leaving after damage, or, or chasing people down for any, any illegal activities. With the cameras going in, I mean, we, we should probably do something about the egress, making it easy for criminals to get out after, after an incident. But I, I don't know what that would do with the city codes, or, or with our codes, or anything like that.
So there are companies that, um, will do like security studies for you, like a security, uh, assessment, to determine if the locations you have in your cameras are ideal, if you should add more, or add other technology to the cameras you have. Um, some will say, they recommend, uh, motion detection on cer, on certain cameras for recording purposes, and others not. Um, speed bumps through, uh, certain developments, you know, you know, the speed bumps that go across, that, et cetera. There's several things like that, that unless you're in that business, we would really have no idea, you know, we think we do, right, and just suggest all these things, but it could end up being really expensive, just do it, right, and don't tell you how to get the most bang for your buck. Um, so it's something to consider.
And if I just wanna, I just add to that, the selection of our tenants, we have to do better. We can't keep letting problems go on for, uh, five, six, seven months to five to six, seven years. Um, sadly, um, when we do have incidents of problems, um, they don't mean relief, they are still there. So the last incident we had, where we had fifteen, fifteen juveniles and a couple adults inside one of our units, they stayed there the, the whole time, even when the police came. So, um, getting them ID'd immediately is one of our biggest problems, cause we have to wait for the court system, once the, the police get involved, and then they're a juvenile house, um, we have to wait a extended period of time to get them ID'd and get them out of there, you know? Um, I think we're making the right progress right now, and, uh, we, we are getting, um, we do have some tenants who are willing to help us out with those who are causing problems, so I think with the security being, um, put in place, I think that's a big step forward, so I, I thought about.
You know, that technology today, also, as you look at it on the private market, without even hiring security personnel, they have, they have ring-type cameras now that, that screws into your outdoor light bulb, and it's, it's active, it's wireless, and it's cost forty bucks. So if, if we sit around and we keep, if we keep looking for the expert, or getting quotes for which camera system is the best, if we just throw forty bucks at somebody's front door, and now we got video coverage, or something that goes on, or not go on, or, or make that available to the resident, if there's privacy issues, let it be their choice. If you want one of these put up or not, at, at least if we get two set up, that's two more than we have right now, right? Or, or just doing something, I mean, we've been talking about cameras since, since June. That's when I first came on the board, that was our first meeting, get cameras installed. We are December.
Right. And, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
We discussed that with one of the subcommittees, that I think Mr. Fly, and, uh, maybe Ms. Raina were on it, I think they did a little bit of background, more research on that, I don't know what the status of that is, but I, I definitely like your idea as far as that deterrent, uh, putting things in place, uh, possible barricading, um, and only having one way in and one way out as, uh, a deterrent to some of the problems out there. They see that we're being proactive and trying to eliminate some of the problems, and maybe their minds will think, you know, I gotta change some of my behaviors also, to the ones that have been causing problems out there. So I like that idea.
Commissioner Raina, do you have any comments you want, like to make?
Please, sir.
Do you have any comments you would like to add?
Any comments you'd like to add?
No, I don't have any.
I'm just gonna stay with Mr., um, I agree with Mr. Harris saying we need to do an assessment, through a, a security firm, and somebody, if it gets to that point, and we make the right decision based off, uh, experience, and off our, um, our anger, or our frustration, or what we think, yes, of the situation that's ahead. I also wanna point out one other thing, um, the OIG has visited us, was it last week or this week?
Last week.
Last week on some issues, I believe you had, was FBI agent with them as well?
Yes.
Yes, we have, um, we won't go into details, but we just want everyone here to know that we're on it, we're reporting and doing the things we, we have to do, but we will not interfere with any opinion investigations. Um, Mr. Dabney asked me, asked a question after I spoke, um, and again.
At the council?
At the council meeting, yes, Tuesday council meeting, and, and just, um, he had a legitimate question, but the, the main concern was, they have a liaison, which is Mr. Michael Mack, City Councilmember Mack, and as usual, he's not here again. That's something that he should have, he should have brought all of them up to speed on, and told them what was going on, cause he's aware of some of the stuff that's going on. In fact, he testified at the hearing, so, uh, with that being said, we are not, um, hiding from anyone, we're gonna do everything we can to weed out the corruption and, uh, misconduct, and we're gonna continue to move forward. And by the way, Mr. Dabney, this is the first ward, Mr. Dabney represents the first ward. Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Motion, please, Jim.
Say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need the Germans.